We will call the meeting to order. It looks like we are mostly present and accounted for. Katie can't be with us tonight due to illness. So, everyone else in attendance. As we start our meeting, we always stand to pledge allegiance to the flag. So if you would join us, we would like to have that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
I do have a couple of additions here that have already been slotted into the personnel. Some assistant dance coaches that were just brought on board. And they are listed there. Kaitlin Borchardt, Angie Sunwell, and Marcy Duden.
So all of these have been updated.
Added after the, yep. It's just been updated.
Other than that, it looks like the agenda has shown with those amendments. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with those amendments?
I'll make the motion.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. It's kind of nice. I don't have to, I don't have, you don't have to plug in.
You can tell us our voices apart now, yeah.
Yeah.
You can see who's talking, too.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the agenda approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under schedule presenter, Stephen Strauss is going to speak to achievement and integration plan.
Yes, Mr. Strauss is available via Zoom tonight. And he will be presenting on a new program that we would like to be partnering with Red Wing District on. Red Wing was approved to become an achievement and integration provider. And for us to be a participant in that, we need to partner with another district and an adjacent district. And so Stephen will be here presenting what we are proposing to the board for approval later on in the agenda. Stephen?
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Mr. Sampson. All right, so like Mr. Sampson said, Red Wing would prove to be a racially isolated district by the state. And in order for them to be a part of the program, they have to have an adjoining district. And in order for us to be a part of this, we have to be a part of the program with a racially isolated district. So two districts are partnering together on this. I had in, it was either April or May presented to the board, just some informational slides on.
Stephen, could we take a timeout here? Our volume isn't quite including everybody in the room. So we'd like to be able to see if we can get that cranked up a bit.
Stephen, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please continue.
All right, so in April, either April or May, I have presented to the board some preliminary informational slides just as an informational session. And in order for us to officially be a part of this, our plan needs to be approved by the board. And what I did in advance was there's a contact that I've been working through with the Department of Education. She's the one that's kind of in charge of approving all of these plans. And I actually first sent it to her because I wanted to know if we were at least close with our plan for what they want. Because I didn't want our school board to approve a plan and then have the state say, this is really far off. This isn't at all what we're looking for. So she sent it back with just some suggestions or some clarified questions. But she said, all in all, it looks good. And we worked back and forth on some of those questions. But she said it seemed like it would look good to present to the board and then the board can do with it what they, what they would like. So on this first slide, Mr. Sampson, are you in charge of this here?
Yes.
Yep, so on the first page, it's just basically kind of some identifiable information for the school. We don't technically have a racially identifiable school within the district. We're just an adjoining district to another district that's racially isolated. So there's some of that basic information on the first page. As you get onto the second page, that would be at whatever point the board, if the board chooses to approve this plan, get a signature from both the board chair and superintendent. And then there's just some more informational stuff. Actually, a lot of these six or seven or eight pages is kind of just informational stuff that the state wants on there. But as far as the multi-district collaboration council, I've been working within some people from our district and Red Wing have been working with people from their district. And we've kind of been tossing ideas around back and forth. And then once you get down to the goal, this is kind of the nitty-gritty of the three goals that we will be pursuing. So the first goal, it says decrease the percentage of free and reduced price eligible students. And then for kind of a quantifier, we wanted this to, you know, have specifics to it. So we said who are enrolled in Cannon Falls High School at least half time, who are behind on total credits from 33%. That's what the number was in May, to 20% in May of 2024. So our goal is to kind of go down a couple percent each year. And then with each of these goals, we have to have certain strategies. So if you scroll down a little bit, Mr. Sampson, you can see strategy number one there is the student success class. That is a class that Mr. Hodges kind of created for the high school. Mr. Sampson and I have been talking about this as well and how this can help get students caught up during the school year, which we've seen an increase in the number of students with either incompletes or failing grades. And we want those students, we want all students to get caught up. And we saw a big disparity in the number of students that were free and reduced price. So like I said, of all the students that are free and reduced price lunch eligible, 33% of them in May were behind on credits. And our overall number, I don't have it in front of me, but I think our overall number was 10% of the population were behind on credits. So it was a pretty big disparity there. So we have a couple different strategies to try to help us out with that. And then you can see on the key indicators of progress, we are going to decrease the number of students and increase the number of credits completed by students during that student success class. Another strategy is tutoring. This is something that is already somewhat in place. But I've talked with both Mr. Hodges and Ms. Hoffman about specifically trying to get a more set in stone schedule for after-school tutoring by the honor society students. So in that strategy, when you see MAHS, that stands for Minnesota Association of Honor Societies, something that Kristin Hoffman and I are both the advisors of. And then the third strategy, this is something that again is ongoing, but we want to try to maybe use some of the funds that we would get for this to potentially provide transportation to students for summer school that need it, even if they live in different places that we normally would send buses to in the summertime. And we want to increase their seat time as well. Because we have some students that come for summer school for just a little bit and then they leave. And then when either myself or Kate Dolland, who is our summer school teacher, or when Robin, one of the secretaries, calls their parents for clarification, the students and the parents were on a different page or the student wasn't maybe being 100% truthful. So we want to try to use all of our resources to make sure students get to summer school, that they're on time, that they stay as long as they can, that they're working as hard as they can to try to help these students get caught up. So that's it for the first goal. Bob, Jeff, do you want to keep going through the second goal? Do you have any questions now? What do you think?
We can see if there's any questions from the board members real quick.
I'm not sure I understand the correlation between the free and reduced population and how they do in our schools scholastically.
So currently in the high schools, so for, you know, this coming school year is 10th through 12th graders, of the students that are eligible for free and reduced price lunch, 33% of them are behind on credits, meaning they have either received an incomplete or failed a class. And that's a, that's a much larger percentage than the general population. So we're trying to get that.
The free and reduced price lunch is an indicator much like race is. And so it's kind of fit in the same type of categories as African-American and Hispanic and free and reduced price lunches because it's, it's an isolated group of kids that need help.
Yes, and one thing that I actually did say at the beginning, we can't use certain demographic information because similar to test scores, how in graduation rates, how certain things aren't posted publicly. For example, for African-Americans or English language learners, because we have so few in the district, we can't give out certain information related to that publicly because it would be potentially easy enough to identify those students. Whereas the free and reduced price students, that number is larger and less easy to identify students. So that's kind of the, what we decided to go with. And also that's something that the state said is, you know, you can either do certain things by race or you can do by free and reduced price lunch. They had certain things that you could do to try to close those achievement gaps. And, you know, socioeconomic status, free and reduced price lunch was one of those.
It's anything under 10%, right? That's not shared for the data points, I think, right? 10% is the data practice for the state?
Off the top of my head, Jeff, I don't know what that is. Is it, that sounds right?
I think it's 10%.
That does sound right. There is a, a line.
Yeah.
Whatever that line is, off the top of my head, I can't remember. But there is a line, yep.
So for example, if you were to go on like the Minnesota Report Card website and look up graduation rate or certain test scores, you would be able to find certain information, certain demographics within Cannon Falls but not other demographics. And yeah, if it falls on there, like you said, I think it's 10%.
Yeah, it's going to show unless it's 10%.
It's either 10% or 20.
Okay.
And I want to say it may be even more like 20 than the percentage.
So for our second goal, and this is something that Mr. Hodges and Ms. Chappie and I had talked about even before we had, you know, decided on being a part of this achievement and integration program, just increasing the, kind of the diversity on staff. And this is something that we're going to try to take steps towards. And this is something that the lady at the state was actually very happy that we were kind of going with this specific goal. Because she likes when, especially out of state, excuse me, out of the metro districts, do these types of things. So in this last school year, we didn't have any full-time racially diverse teachers. And this was something that I talked with Mr. Sampson and I talked with the lady at the state about, you know, how do we come up with this information? And you can either have, you know, questions on job applications, for example, or you can just ask people. And one thing that we talked about at the administrative level, and then we checked with the union representatives as well, was to just send an email out to teachers explaining what was going on, explaining how, you know, we hope to, Cannon Falls is an accepting, welcoming, comfortable workplace for everybody. And we want to create a little bit more of a diverse workplace. But in order to increase our diversity, we need to know where we're at. So we found that for the teacher that wanted to respond, it was a voluntary thing, that we didn't have any full-time teachers that are of some other race other than white. And so our goal is within a couple of years to have that number be to at least two. And as far as the, the main strategy along with that is some college recruitment. We kind of talked about sending me or potentially someone else, but for the most part, probably me, to colleges, to work with the, you know, the College of Education at different universities, to maybe send me to different career fairs or college fairs, things like that. And specifically contacting other universities and trying to get more applicants to Cannon Falls. Because I know one thing that Mr. Hodges has said, that he really wants to try to increase the diversity in his, his specific building. But he's said that it's tough when, right now especially, we're getting very few applicants in general, regardless of the race. So he said he really wants to try to get more applicants in general of all different backgrounds, whether it's race, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, whatever. Because he wants to get as many different applicants of different backgrounds as he can. So that's the second goal. And then the third goal is, there was a survey sent out to high school students, just the Likert scale, where one was strongly disagreed, two was disagreed, three was neutral, four was agree, and five was strongly agree. Based on like, do you feel comfortable talking about diversity with other students in Cannon Falls? And the baseline average that we have from that survey was 3.28. So slightly above neutral or, you know, more in the comfortable category, more in the agree category. We want to try to get that up to 3.8 where we're more in the, towards the solid agree category. And one of the main things that we want to do with this is this is where the, some of the partnership with Red Wing will come into play. Because as one of our, at least one of our strategies, we have to partner with Red Wing. And one of these strategies, we just called it integration with Red Wing, we are going to hold some equity and leadership training for middle school and high school students with Red Wing. And there will be, so there will be students from Red Wing and students from Cannon Falls attending these trainings together, trying to get students to meet people from different backgrounds, trying to get students to talk with people from different schools, and all learn about leadership and equity in the process. And then they push for equity. And then, so one of our indicators, our indicator of progress for that one is to try to increase the number of students that attend these trainings each year. Second strategy is a diversity club, something that we've talked about with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and something that's kind of, you know, in the infant stages of talking about and creating. And then I think there's another strategy too. I think we've got one more down below, Jeff. Number seven. Yes, a family, oh, actually, we have two more. I forgot about this one. Having a family engagement night in the high school, middle school building, at least once per year. This will kind of be a showcase of any kind of talents that students want to showcase, a get to know you for high school students or middle school students and families, to bring any family that wants to come together to meet others in the community, to show off artwork, to show off projects that maybe the robotics team has done, and all the great things that are going on in Cannon Falls. So much like other strategies as well, the strategies can't be specifically saying, we are going to do this for black students or for American Indian students. The strategies are designed to help those non-achieving groups or underachieving groups, I should say. But they're designed to help everybody integrate and build everybody up. So that's what that family engagement night is about. And then the last one, strategy eight, this is another one that will be done with Red Wing, a classroom integration, something that I don't miss Chappie and two of the elementary principals in Red Wing that I've been working with, they're very excited about. We're going to have some elementary and middle school classrooms kind of communicate every so often and then give them a chance to meet as well throughout the school year. So we're going to have students from maybe one third grade classroom or one fifth grade classroom. Every couple of weeks, they're going to zoom in with another third or fifth grade classroom from Red Wing. And this can be to connect for a discussion. There can be kind of some virtual teaching going on from, you know, a teacher from a different school. This can be kind of a get to know you time. We're going to have these students kind of write some letters back and forth as well to get in touch. And once each school year, these students will meet face to face. And we still have to figure out all of the details on that, especially with, well, who knows what's happening with kind of the pandemic and everything. But those are details we would still have to work out. But we have to have the students meet together. And we're hoping that this will help build educational skills, social skills, integrate the students. And the thought is that we could get some of these students then the next year, if they're in fifth grade this coming year, then the next year, some of those students might still be in sixth grade classrooms connecting with each other. And then we continue to move forward like that. So those are the goals. Those are the strategies. Are there any other questions, especially on those second two goals?
Steve, it's Bill. I had a question on, I think it was goal two, on the staff. What percentage did you get response from?
The way that we worded it was that we wanted, not wanted, we were requesting teachers if they were willing to respond if they identified themselves as non-white.
Right, but what percent did we get a response from?
What's the response rate?
Yeah.
It was, it was zero because nobody, I didn't even.
No, no. How many people, Stephen, how many people did the survey? What was the response rate for the survey out of the total staff faculty population?
It wasn't a survey. It was sent out as an email and teachers were to just reply to me with their information.
I think we're confusing, I think we're confusing goals. Some, some people are talking about goal two and some people are talking about goal three.
How many, how many teachers responded to your email? Was it half of the staff? Was it a quarter of the staff?
It was zero because they only needed to respond if they identified as non-white.
Oh, so nobody responded.
Got it.
Gotcha.
And I did talk, I did find out that we had one long-term sub-teacher on staff that identified as non-white but was not in a full-time position.
And so will the email be a follow-up on a, on an annual basis then? And then as applications come in, we will be asking that question upfront?
Yep, that's one, that's one thing that I have to talk with both Mr. Sampson and Lori and Tanya Jennifer a little bit about. Because Lori gave me a couple different examples of some of our applications. And the application she showed me didn't have a racially, a racial demographic question. But when I talked to somebody who had applied recently for a job here and was granted a job, he had said that he thought there was, he couldn't remember off the top of, he didn't know for sure. But he goes, I think I, I think I asked, I think I answered that question. So I'm going to have to double check for sure because the ones Lori showed me, we didn't have it on there. And Jeff, you said you didn't think we did either, right?
Not on the paper copy, but I'm wondering if it's the online application that has it and not the paper application?
That's something that we could, we'd probably have to.
That needs to be followed up with to make sure that it's consistent, but.
Because that's something that would be easier than, to keep track of.
Did you, it's Bob. Did you address why we're partnering with Red Wing as opposed to other local districts?
With you guys or with the staff?
In general. How was, how was Red Wing the chosen partner here?
They, Red Wing asked us. Right. It's the way I understand it.
So the state identified Red Wing as being racially isolated. And for them to participate in the achievement and integration program, they needed to find another partner that is adjacent to Red Wing. And so they sent emails out to the adjacent districts with information around the achievement and integration program. And we had a discussion here and decided to move forward with looking into this and then eventually obviously bringing it to the board.
Stephen, under strategy eight, with the, the classroom integration, for the, the key indicator of progress, you talked about concurrent enrollment. And how are you, are you using that just with the, I guess my understanding of concurrent enrollment is a little different. I think that's just the example. Is that just the example? Okay. The, the actual indicator is underneath there, the number of classrooms participating. Oh, my gosh, sorry. It's been a long day. Thank you, Anna. Never mind. I was like very confused.
Just so that you all know, I don't, I don't know for sure when I submit this to the state, if I'm supposed to delete those or not. Because they gave me an example of one that was approved by the state and it had those examples kept in there. But it confused me as well when I was looking through it one time because I remember thinking, I didn't put this in there, who is this example from?
I was just really, I was really struggling to understand how we would use that to assess it. But it makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Hodges, I wonder if you had anything to add here?
Mr. Hodges is an a.
Then he, then the answer is no.
Right.
Did someone from the audience have a question?
I have a.
Sure.
I'm political and I live in Cannon Falls. Just on the strategy of number six, the diversity club that is going to be created. Am I speaking loud enough? I don't know. Just wondered how that would be, the success of that would be measured.
Stephen, we had a person in the audience that asked a question about how the success of strategy number six, diversity club would be measured.
Okay. Well, in terms of this plan, our key indicator of progress would be the number of students in the club. Each year, we'd like to increase that by at least five. So as it pertains to this specific plan and the state, that's what we would be looking at there.
So the first year, you'd be looking at at least five, and then the following year, 10, and then the following year, 15?
Yep.
I think my question was more about content, you know, to, not numbers, but content of diversity club. How would that be measured as successful in diversity training?
And that's something that we still, like I said, the diversity club in itself is in infancy stages. So we still have to talk about what exactly would be a part of it, what events would they go to or put on and things like that. So some of that remains to be, I mean, most of that remains to be seen because we haven't had, I mean, to my knowledge, Cannon Falls hasn't ever had a diversity club at all. So that's something that we kind of have to create.
So you really can't create the, the activities because it's going to be student-driven, is what you're saying? Stephen?
Yes. We, we would just have to, we, what students are a part of it and then what they all want to do and what we as a school, what direction we want to go with that as well.
Sure.
And in terms of content, it would be open for any student to be a part of it. A student wouldn't have to be considered a diverse student by racial standards or socioeconomic standards or anything to be a part of this.
Yeah, and that's a good point to bring up as well.
Other questions for Stephen? Anyone? Sure.
On the strategy number five, one is talking about holding equity and leadership training for middle school and high school students. I wondered if that training, the content of the training would be available prior to it being driven or, or created? And if that was, the content could be reviewed by community members like myself or if it's just something reviewed by the school board or the teaching staff? That's my question.
Stephen, what do you know about the training for the leadership and equity?
Well, I don't, that's, so of the different strategies and the different things that we're working with Red Wing on, that in itself is something right now that I know the Red Wing principal was looking into more than I was in terms of like specifically what it would be or who would do the training. So when it comes to specifics on that, I don't know as much about that right now.
Anything else? Stephen, I appreciate your time and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
What are our sequential steps in all of this?
We'd be looking for board approval to formally move forward with the integration later on in the meeting.
It's part of our.
That's later on the agenda.
All right. Reports and communication. We do not have a school board student rep here at this time. Has there been any school board committees that you'd like to report?
The marketing committee has had a couple of meetings since our last board meeting. We have another meeting scheduled for next week. We're kind of just in the process of determining what the committee is going to look like. We've reviewed some different resources that are potentially available to us, determining, determining how we want to move forward with those. Just kind of trying to get things organized and sorted out since it's a brand new committee.
Anything to add?
Anna did a good job.
Ed reports.
Sure.
Ed Foundation, that's a work thing I'm doing. Ed Foundation had a meeting on June 17th and they are planning for some fundraisers in the summer. There, there's another open-air fair July 8th, the previous one was canceled weather. And they're planning a movie night August 7th down in the ball field down there. And also another poker, poker social that'll be in the fall, in September. And then they'll have Give to the Max in November as well coming up. And also they are carrying over some of their budget from last year because they didn't have as many requests. So they wanted to encourage teachers and faculty to submit requests if they have any. They would go through Ed then for that, right?
Yep.
And also later on, we'll have some new board members to approve.
Yep. Ed Foundation has still been active throughout the pandemic and they've been very supportive of the district throughout this time.
Okay. Moving down to the administrative board reports. Do we have anything in our packet for the elementary? Nothing going on there, I suppose, during the summertime?
No, nothing from the elementary or high school. Reed has joined us for community ed and activities. If he would like to, if you want him to speak right now?
Yeah, I think it'd be good. Reed, you're up to bat.
Hi, everybody. All right, just giving you a quick little synopsis here. I've been working more community ed on our finding a new school age childcare coordinator. Hope to have an answer here yet this week. Working at clearly defining those roles and expectations. Also, we are, were interviewed for three assistant dance coach positions as you got those added to the agenda, so thank you for that. Later this, or late this afternoon, I had an offer out to a head coach for girls soccer who declined just based off their new residence and new opportunities heading north where they were looking for employment since we didn't have a teaching opening available for them. So that got reposted yet later this afternoon. And we will attempt to move as quick as we can here if we can get some candidates to interview. Other than that, just wrapping up, end of season reporting and evaluations. Getting reports sent off to the sections. That type of stuff. Also, Bill, I'll be reaching out here in an interview, or excuse me, interview, email to complete, give you a copy of a coach's handbook that I'm working on as well as activities handbook. Just getting some revisions that we want there. And then let you review that and I'll get a few head coaches to sit down on the committee and we can discuss and hopefully have that available for the July board meeting.
Perfect. Reed, what happens if we don't find a viable candidate for the girls soccer program? Are you the new soccer coach, is what I'm asking?
That's a good question.
It has happened from time to time, but it's been a while.
And it's unfortunate because the offer was today was in top-two interviews of my career. It was going to be, had success at both the boys' program and the girls' program in Wisconsin. Was moving to get closer to family and it was just unfortunate that we couldn't make it work. So we'll have to see what we can, what we can, how we can get creative, what that's going to look like. But yeah, that, that could be me facing the sidelines, asking a lot of questions.
You could Ted Lasso it, have you seen that show on Apple?
Any other questions for Reed? Any, anything else?
Do we have a state making bar? Did she take eighth place at golf at the state? I can say I baby sat her.
I did get seventh.
Seventh?
Seven.
Yeah, she was third after the first day. I went up to the second day and watched and had a lot of fun. That was enjoyable. And so tremendous honor to get seventh place.
Mr. Olson's had a very busy spring between her baseball team, softball team, track athletes, golf.
I just, I didn't get to everything and that's my goal here as we go forward in the future. But I just took care of my report for all the travel I did for section and state events. And I put on 1,577 miles going to and from. It's been a busy last six weeks.
Thank you for your time.
Doing last six weeks.
Do we get a report from Dave Peterson at all?
No, Dave had to jump out at the last minute and he was going to talk, but he had to, he couldn't make it tonight. So, sorry about that.
Yep. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I've got a few items here. We do have the notice of intent to negotiate from the teachers' union. As of the beginning of the board meeting tonight, the legislature still isn't done yet. They keep saying that they will be done by the 30th. I'm not going to hold my breath on that. But I would still like to set up a negotiation committee meeting. At least give me a couple of dates that I can send back to their chief negotiator to start in July sometime that works. And then I can start that communication process. And obviously we would meet ahead of time as a negotiation committee like we normally have in the past. But I think it's important to at least set up the date because I, even though I'm not holding my breath, I still have a little bit of faith that the legislature will finish up on time like they say they're going to. So do you guys have any dates in mind possibly? Vacationing or anything like that?
Yes, in July, what is it, the 8th through the 11th? Thursday, Friday, but other than that.
Very similar for me. Dates are very similar.
Preferably I'd like to stick to Wednesdays at least until the end of the month. But I will be gone the week of the 19th.
So the 8th to the 11th is a Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
The 8th is a Thursday.
So could we do it? Could we meet that subsequent Wednesday, which would be like the 14th?
Wednesdays are bad for me.
Oh, Wednesdays are bad for you?
Yes, they would be.
Would Monday work, like the 12th?
No, I'll be out of town that day.
Negotiations group.
Negotiations.
Oh, I'm not going to be there, so.
Sounds like you want to be.
Brenda, you, I could step aside.
Okay, go ahead.
Monday, the 12th, or can we look at the, or the 26th is our board meeting?
Let's just do the 12th, you're good.
Yeah, we'll start with that.
We'll start with the 12th maybe for communication purposes. And see if that works. If that doesn't, I'll be back in touch with you guys. And that's, is that usually a 5:30 committee meeting and then 6 o'clock start, right?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past. I'm not sure you want to start in the morning.
Well, I'm up at that time. Marketing committee update we've already given. I just had that as a placeholder as a reminder. Facility and finance committee meetings in July. I wanted to schedule that tonight so everybody's here at the table. So please look at your calendars. And the finance committee meeting has quite a few people on it. So we're just going to have to probably just pick a date that works for board members and whoever can make it can make it. Usually that's been a 7:00 AM meeting to help accommodate the people in town on it. So...
Seven works pretty good, so let's see if we can push toward that type of time frame.
And do we want to kind of get away from the week of the 4th?
Probably so.
Maybe the week of the 12th?
I could do Monday through Wednesday that week. I will be out of town Thursday, Friday.
Could we do Wednesday morning? I got a chamber breakfast on Tuesday and Representative Haley's talking then. And then I have to be in Red Wing at 8:00 on Monday, so Wednesday would work for me.
Wednesday's good for me.
Wednesday, the 14th? Bob?
Sure.
I won't be there.
That'll be a finance committee. Brenda's trying to jump in on all the committee meetings.
Sarcasm right here.
That's finance, Wednesday, the...
July 14th at 7:00 AM. And then facility. You want to do a back-to-back? Because you're on, no?
Let me... I, I could. It wouldn't be my preference, but I can. That's what works best for everybody.
Who else is on facility?
I'm the alternate, but I can, I plan on coming in, so.
Okay, does, do the finance committee meetings usually last an hour? Or should we plan on an hour and a half?
Well, it usually takes an hour and a half at those meetings because I know we get pressed when some of the teachers have to leave during the regular school year.
Or should we just give ourselves some time and say 9 o'clock? Does that work, Anna?
That, that should be fine. Nine on the, what date?
Uh, the 14th.
That would work.
Look at this.
Are we meeting in person or via Zoom?
I will send out Zoom links for people that can't make it. Yep, in person.
Okay, so we're looking at 7:00 AM Wednesday, the 14th for finance. We're looking at 9:00 AM Wednesday, the 14th for facility.
Yep, okay. On, it was requested last meeting. There's a timeline. What is the timeline for the next election possibilities in case there is a desire to go out again? Next, this next year is a redistricting in Minnesota. And so there are options of going out again this November. February 22nd, if we're doing bonding. And then not again until August 9th. So they skipped the April and May for redistricting and then November of '22 also. And so if you look at these timelines on here with February 8th being the earliest of '22, November 10th is a line of demarcation, I guess, if you will. We have to, we would have to submit a review and comment. And we'd also have to have the combined polling place resolution in place before November 10th. So I'm guessing we'd have to do it at the last meeting in October for that. But I, but you know what? I take, well, we have it set up that we've already done '22, so we'd be doing '23. So we're already okay from that standpoint. We've checked that with elders. But really, the biggest thing is probably the review and comment. We would have to revise if you decide to go back out again and either increase the project or decrease the project of what we're asking the community. To finally call the formal resolution for the election would be on no later than the 26th of November. You asked me to talk to ISG to see if that is too quick of a turnaround for a February 8th election and they did not have any qualms about getting stuff turned around that quickly if need be. And the rest of these deadlines are just more procedural things for Lori and I to take care of. This is just purely informational right now, not meant to spur discussion, but keep that in mind and you'll have access to it if need be. My final item here is, right after school, got out, the state told us that we need to revise our safe learning plan into a safe return plan and gave us a few guidelines to follow. And so that has been posted by June 21st to our website and it's linked in here. It does follow the state guidance from what was given out to us at the very last minute, which seems to be the case with the state these days. And I have sent it out to our COVID advisory committee for any comments. It is a flexible plan, if you will, that can change as the state's guidance changes. Any questions? Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the billing administrators and/or the suit. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed three to five minutes per issue. The board cannot exchange, engage in a public inner discussion or debate in any of those three to five minutes, but will take information and find the answers if that is appropriate. Does anyone wish to speak to the board about questions or concerns? Yes, please stand up and restate your name once more.
Hi, I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience. I'm Belinda Coon. I've been an educator over 40 years. Most of that was overseas. I just moved back to the US a few years ago and relocated to Cannon Falls early last year. It's hard to get to know people then because everyone was kind of sequestered, as it were. Thank you for your patience, chairman and superintendent, rest of the board. I really appreciate and value very much all your efforts to follow your mission statement, which I feel is just a very wonderful mission statement. Partnering with families and community to provide safe, nurturing, challenging, inspiring environment to educate all individuals to be lifelong learners and responsible, productive citizens. Might have been a while since you heard that, huh? But when I read it, I thought, boy, these guys are really reaching high and I really appreciate it. As an educator myself, I just value the fact that you guys are getting up at 7:00 and 5:30 and 10:00, 9:00 in the morning and doing all this. So I, I asked my friend Becky Goodwin, who probably everybody knows here in Cannon Falls, if she'd come with me because I just have a heart to support and encourage. And I looked up on the agenda to find out what the agenda points were. And I found it quite interesting to see the Achievement Integration Plan. And I don't know if this is like just a new plan to me or if you've like been reviewing it for weeks and weeks in order to pass it yes or no tonight. But I did have a few concerns about that, especially because our community, as all communities in Minnesota and across the USA, are still reeling from last year's distance learning and the effect on our kids and that sort of thing too. So my, my concern in seeing this, this Achievement Integration Plan presented now is just like, can't we just delay that while we get our footing back for our, for our schools, for our teachers, for our staff, for our school board members and our students? Because Lord knows we have a lot to do right now just to try and get back into face-to-face learning. So it just seems a little bit concerning to me also, understanding the fact that I was, I mean, I, I went to the University of Minnesota back in, I graduated in '78, okay, with a teaching degree. But I know that what the state brings out is often for the, for the majority, for the bigger districts, for the city schools. And it might not always have an eye on the smaller schools. And it might not always have an eye on the smaller schools like Cannon Falls and even Red Wing. So, uh, I'm just a little concerned that we have an eye for the individual, for the, the, the people, the, the children. We don't institute great plans and programs and try and get all these, the fine workings of the motor going without actually just getting to know the kids that we need to get to know. And I'm sure our teachers are doing that, and the tutors are doing that, and as a citizen in Cannon Falls, I'm willing to get involved in that as well, um, to see our, our kids flourish. The Achievement Integration Plan seemed to have quite an emphasis on the American Indian population, of which we only have 1.5% American Indians in Goodyear County total, which really comes down to about 120 children under the age of 18, um, if you do the math, which I actually did. I don't even like math, so... But, um, I know that it's talking about the American Indian population and getting the parental advisory boards engaged. And I don't, I'm not aware that there is a parental advisory board, an American Indian Parental Advisory Committee, IPAC, yeah, here in Cannon Falls, nor in Red Wing, or is there? I'm not sure. So that's my ignorance on that. But I, I do happen to know, even though that it is mentioned, that the concern is for American Indian population, which is a wonderful concern. Um, it's not the only people group, as we have designated here with FRP, you know, Financial Reduced, you know? What is that? FRP?
Pre-reduced.
Price.
Pre-reduced price.
Right.
Yes, thank you for correcting that. So, um, I'm not sure if it's really, uh, specifically aimed at achievement integration of American Indians, or if it's more. It sounds like it's more, but that was the only people group that was identified. I have a warm heart for people groups. I've been in over probably 70 countries and taught in over 40 countries. And so I really, I appreciate cultures and the diversity that we can learn from other cultures. When we recognize them and honor them and respect them and learn from them as well. So, um, I'm just, uh... My, my question, I suppose, would be, um, if we could consider delaying the implementation of the Achievement Integration Plan until a later date, um, instead of like pushing it through now, uh, until we get our feedback as a community into the schools, into the, with the students and back in order. Also, it might be, there might be more concerned citizens, as myself, of, of how this is being done. As maybe was noted by the two questions I posed earlier on the strategy about the content. What is actually the content? It's a good idea, but what's the content? What's our aim? What's our goal? How are we going to measure it? You know, SMART goals, that sort of thing. So, that's the only thing I really wanted to say, uh, that I really do appreciate all your hard work and all your labor. Really, I do. And, um, I hope to make another school board meeting or two or three or more. Just because I want to be an involved, um, community member here and to give my support, but also to ask questions when questions are warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance report. What did you, tell us what you have, Mr. Davis.
Sure. Uh, so what you hear is the cash flow worksheet as of the time the board agenda went out, the top of it, the bank balances. And important to understand as we talk through now, uh, finance report and seeing cash, uh, balances. And we talk later about revised budget and dealing with some fund balances. The two are a little bit different. Um, what you see here is cash on hand. A few things kind of note of, of interest went through as fiscal year rolls over now and changes from June 30th to July 1st. Uh, you'll see quite a few expenditures that are fiscal '22 expenditures that will come out of the budget that was approved at last board meeting. First being Chromebooks and staff devices about a quarter of the way down on the left side. We are switching over now rather than leasing, uh, one-to-one devices, but going to purchase devices. And hopefully, uh, once we get rid of all the leases and strictly to a purchasing, it'll allow us to better handle the changing needs of, um, both the students and the staff of the district. As well as help financial out the district in times where maybe we need to purchase several extra at a time, or we can do without a couple, uh, in a given year. Uh, further down, you'll see listed items that says tech leases, bus leases. Most of them have listed their, the payment out of five, generally for bus leases, out of five, tech leases out of three. Uh, some of those are wrapping up, and that's part of that discussion in the tech committee of moving from a leasing strategy to a purchase strategy. The one other benefit of that, and it's not a huge, especially with where interest rates are at now, but there are some interest savings as well by going with a straight purchase versus a lease. Uh, right in the middle, uh, the 2016A, 2017A, 2017B. Those are debt service payments, and, um, there are two interest payments made annually. One in the beginning of August, one in, uh, the end of January. This is an interest-only payment, uh, on this debt. Uh, the press flow comes in, uh, that began in February payment. Uh, after that, the standards for, things will come out, payroll being one, ideas payments coming in, those are payments from the state. Uh, Mr. Sampson had talked about, they still are working on budget parameters for fiscal '22 for us. We've got some, you know, modest hopes, I guess, what that would be, to, and to, hopefully that's where they'll go into falling. Uh, anything that changes from that will affect what we do for budgeting in fiscal '22, obviously. And, uh, we've been given advance notice that a lot of the departments at the state, if nothing is settled by June 30th, will be going into shutdown, and it will impact us in terms of how we're able to access some services at the state. It'll just put things on hold. We may have some delayed ideas payments as there's not people to push those payments out. As it looks right now, we refine in terms of cash flow. If those ideas payments don't come in on the short term, we'd be okay. As if the, if a shutdown were to go extended period of time, we might look at maybe some anticipation borrowing. And all, and whenever things like this have happened in the state, all those funds will come to the district. It's just a matter of the timing of it, so... We'd be a little bit on our own if that were to happen. Hopefully not. Hopefully they get things settled out by the 30th. That's why after the finance report, if there's any questions, certainly do my best to answer.
Any questions for Josh at this time? Love to digest. If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion?
No, seconded.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion in the event a board member wants to discuss any single item. It can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Usually, Jeff likes to take items, see and recognize the acceptance of gifts, so...
Yes. Uh, this month, we want to thank the following donors. Cannon Falls Football Booster Club for donating $996 for helmet reconditioning. Gemini for the donation of $250 for track and field expenses. And the Mayo Clinic for $265 for operational funds. Thank you for your generous donations this month.
Take just a moment to, uh, look over the minutes from the last two meetings, and if you have any questions or concerns, bring them forth. Otherwise, uh, when you're ready, I would look for a, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I gotta look from Bob.
I don't know how much time people need to read, so... Anna, you seconded that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those that approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approval, one year, 21-22 1.0 FTE sixth-grade teaching contract.
Uh, this is for Rachel Langer. And I recommend approval on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Other discussion?
Well, I just, as far as doing the three of them, um, how they fit in what we're placing and moving or finishing up from before.
Yeah, it's been musical chairs, to say the least, in the elementary, and... Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Yeah, and but we're, we seem to be all settled now, as long as there is approval.
So we have a motion to second on the floor for the approval of Rachel Langer as a sixth-grade teacher. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried, 5-0. Consideration to approve the 21-22 1.0 FTE third-grade teaching contract.
And the name here is Sarah Kelly. And I recommend approval.
So are these, is it a new hire, or is this a someone?
This would be a new hire from outside backfill movement.
Make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor of Sarah Kelly as a third-grade teacher for the upcoming school year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 21-22 1.0 FTE first-grade teaching contract.
Uh, this is Marissa Flavin, and this is a long-term, Marissa was a long-term sub for a couple of years, and so she's transferring to a full-time. The best way to say that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna.
And was there any question of having to terminate the long-term sub contract?
I believe we did that last...
Did we do that last?
Because we had that confirmed, I believe.
Okay, so we have a motion to second to approve Marissa Flavin as the first-grade teacher for the upcoming school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 21-22 1.0 FTE K-12 media specialist.
Uh, the name here is Deb Kopp. And his name is what? Kopp, K-O-P-P?
So this is changing from, uh, to be K-12, or before we had one for elementary and one for high school.
Yeah, that's part of the coverage for the high school.
Good. And so will they spend part of their day in one place and then part of the other?
Yep.
All right, I'll move to approve that.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Other conversation, discussion? Okay. All those who vote to approve Deb Kopp as a media specialist, K-12, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, 5-0. Consideration to approve the 21-22 fundraisers.
This is an annual item, as I understand it, but I've only been there two years. Um, one of them was a COVID year, and that was really interesting with fundraising. So, um, this is the list that we have at this time. I know Reed can maybe speak to it a little bit better, but it's my understanding that some programs have responded and have found fundraisers, and some have not found fundraisers yet. And some have nothing planned at this time. Is that an accurate account, Reed?
Correct. Still waiting to hear back from some, so there might be some additions if there are any. I'll make sure that I bring them forward, too.
Okay, and so we'll probably update this. It's whenever we get new ones.
Any questions? We review these some years. We have much more discussion on them than others.
So we're just going to, or to appear the ones that are listed here, not the ones that are blank?
Right.
They'll have to come back with whatever they decide.
Yeah, yep.
And the purpose is just to make sure that we're not doubling up on...
Yeah, doubling up and making sure, not only hitting different businesses, but having more than one per program.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion, second?
Second.
By Rebecca. Any other discussion? All in favor of the 21-22 fundraisers as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the negotiation start date.
Um, I think formally we need to approve and willing to be able, or willing to negotiate with teachers, so... If you want to formally approve the July 12th date that we start.
So I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rebecca. To formally approve the beginning of negotiations, which will be July 12th. Any other discussion?
And that dates incumbent on decisions made from the state legislature, correct?
Yeah, if they don't settle tonight, I don't think the union wants to start up either, is from what I'm gathering. So I think both sides want to know what we're working with.
Seem practical. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the Invenergy allocations.
Uh, each year, the board is asked, uh, to bring this up to see how you want to spend those extra dollars from the Invenergy roof, uh, elementary project, I guess, from whenever that was started 20-plus years ago? Or maybe not quite that long ago.
Yes, we're about 13, 14 years in. Um, so about between... Invenergy, we get, uh, basically a tax-afford payment to us directly from Invenergy, about $210,000 for 20 years, as they kind of avoid taxes or start up. Along with that, there's a portion that comes from the city of Cannon Falls, about 100, $210,000. It's not inflationary, so it changes each year a little bit, so... Uh, it's about $310,000. What we had done when we initially got those funds from Invenergy is we needed a roof replaced at the elementary school. And, uh, in school financially, able to lease a roof, uh, they're really, they're not going to come take it back. It's ours. That's the terms that they use. It was $158,000 annually. We took those funds from Invenergy dollars and put the rest into general fund. Uh, now that the elementary roof lease is paid off, each year now we come to the board and ask, for the blessing of God, how are we going to use the, those funds? And that's where the discussion would then start for this, this question.
Uh, last year, we used it on the security project, uh, at the elementary. Um, I, I guess I would recommend keeping those dollars in, uh, facilities, because we do have facility needs, and have the Facility Committee, um, decide what to do with that and bring that money back, if you guys are okay allocating it to that. Uh, I would recommend, uh, at this point, using about $140,000 of that, and I think, um, that leaves about $18,000, $19,000 open, uh, for possibilities. Uh, if the marketing committee would want to use that moving forward, uh, there is that possibility. So we're not increasing the budget, that those dollars are there. And if you want to allocate the whole thing, that's fine, I guess, so...
I think, I think it has always been, and as we've been working out, the Facility Committee in forming a operating capital of a long-term facility, for a plan for the district on what facility needs are, maintenance needs are. As those funds were directed initially towards an elementary roof, it kind of makes sense that those funds would stay with facilities and defer maintenance items that we have. Uh, when we passed the $11 million project to do HVAC improvements... When we passed the $11 million project to do HVAC improvements, it severely cut into the amount of flexibility we have with long-term facility maintenance dollars. So it's going to help to backfill some of those. And we have a priority list, I think the facility committee would be pretty good at, you know, partying out which are the most high need areas to spend those dollars.
Are we voting to approve the allocations you recommend, or just letting the facilities?
My recommendation is to allocate $140,000 to the facilities, but you guys can decide what you want to do. That's just my recommendation.
But we have to decide what the allocations would be tonight?
No, I think you want to turn that over to the facility committee, if you have to decide to do that.
Those would come back after the facilities committee makes that decision.
If they're larger than whatever I can approve.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so at this point in time, we're going to hand this money over, if you will, to facilities, and facilities will determine where the priorities are and bring it back to us for final approval.
Well, I don't know, is that really the?
You're allocating money, and the facility committee, you know, can decide how to do it. They don't necessarily need to bring it back for reapproval.
Right, but we're allocating it to the long-term.
Facilities.
Facilities maintenance line.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not really to the facilities committee to spend their dollars.
You're directing where you want this money to go, and then the facilities committee can help enact that. The board has already approved the dollars, so we don't need to bring those back, per se. That would be redundant.
But then what about the $18,000, $19,000 you said possibly to be used for marketing?
I think there's been discussions around the possibility of using some dollars for marketing, and if the committee decides not to bring that forward at this time, that money will just simply go into the general fund, undesigned it at this time. So the option is there, anyway.
So with the $140,000 that we're discussing, what would be the long-term, uh, facilities budget with that addition?
Yeah, so with operating capital needs, we, because of the debt on that limit on project, we have this minimal funds, and we actually end up overspending that each year. So what we'd end up doing is just reducing the amount of burden on the general fund, is what it does. Each year, we, it's about $300,000, and we supplement operating capital with general fund dollars, so it'd make that $160,000.
Oh, yeah, I just think, you know, long-term, that's one of the issues that we saw with the referendum, that we don't have a plan. And so I think if we have the ability to put more in there, we should be.
So much is better.
So what does the motion need to say? That's what I'm trying to get down to. A dollar amount, or?
Well, the total dollars are, you know, 158, and I guess I'm recommending 140, but if you want to go 158, that's fine.
Well, it gives us some flexibility in marketing, doesn't it? And that's, if we potentially use that extra 18, it gives us that flexibility without jumping into our budget anymore.
Yeah.
I think that the intent is, if we're able to do something marketing-wise, and we decide that some allocation need to put there, it's a way to do that without affecting the general fund, and not having to cut someplace else to make that happen, reduce another area to make that happen.
Knowing that if the money isn't used, it can go back into the general.
Just goes back to the general fund.
Correct.
So really, what we're allocating is the 140 for sure, to go into facilities, with the flexibility of possibly using that other 18 for marketing, but we haven't made that decision yet. Or is it enough marketing information?
The marketing committee hasn't decided what we need, or what we might want.
So I guess I would look for a motion to approve $140,000 of the 158 so far to the facilities.
Well, through the long-term facility.
Maintenance.
Maintenance line.
Yep, long-term facilities maintenance line, yep. I would agree with that.
Would make that motion.
I'll second.
Bill on the motion? Brenda on the second? Other discussion?
Are you with that motion, then, including the remaining $18,000 to marketing?
No, we don't really have to.
Okay.
It would just be undesigned.
It's kind of what our thought process is, but I guess Marketing Group will bring us back more info. So we have a motion to second on the floor for the approval of the 140 toward facility maintenance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, five zero. Good discussion. Approval of the 2021 revised budget.
I think I've got that document here somewhere. There we go. Josh?
Uh, yep. So what we've got here is, the bottom number is the preliminary, the initial budget for fiscal year '21 approved last June. And we've had, we had several revisions to the fiscal '21 budget. Probably one more than we may normally have, as things have changed quite a bit with COVID and pandemic-related expenses, as well as some revenue sources from the Fed. So what you see here is going to be the final revised budget for fiscal year '21, and while this is as accurate as it possibly can be, there's still going to be some changes as we go through the next month and a half or so of closing out fiscal '21, audit entries and cleaning everything up, tying up all those things, but it's pretty, pretty good as it's going to get. The biggest change, and we usually like to look at a general fund, that's going to be the main fund that the district are going to be using, it's the one that, in terms of audit, and where the state look at us for where we're at in terms of fund balance percentage, or statutory operating debt, those sorts of items, are going to look at. And this really summarizes about 65, 70 pages of code into just a small sort of summary. So if there are any questions afterwards, please feel free to give me a call or email if you want further clarification. Board policy, and we've been trying to strive for, and it'll take some time to do, because in order to have that happen, we have to have revenue over expenditures, but board policy is to have an unreserved, sorry, undesigned balance of 8% to 12% of our expenditures. And as expenditures go up, that number would increase as well. Coming into this fiscal year, after audit, we were at about 2% undesigned, and with this budget, we should be about 3% by the time we're down this fiscal year. Coming into fiscal year '21, we had made reductions of, in excess of $300,000, help bolster that, even with pandemic expenses and increased items, whether it be to promote social distancing, signage, PPE, all sorts of things. We're still, let's say, pretty close on target on that. At the end of the year, we looked at about $370,000 of surplus, at the end of the district revision, about $320,000. Part of that is, you know, fluctuation in the revenue expenses we've gone through the fiscal year, part of it is in enrollment. We do have a slight decline in enrollment in pre-reach kids, based on not just the state allocation, but also the levy portion in eight, about $10,000. So if we were down about five kids, which is what I've kind of projected here, you'd look at about $50,000 to the district. In terms of total fund balance, at the end of last year, so we're reserved and unreserved funds, we're at just under 5% last year, and with this budget, we should be about 7.25%. And again, that's total fund balance. You see it projected 993 on the top right corner, that divided by the total expenditures of 13, 672, puts you at that 7.25%. Uh, this budget includes some reserve dollars going forward, in order for us to, the operating capital and LTFM, and we talked about trying to bolster that and help out in areas that are in need of infrastructure facilities, whether it be deferred maintenance items or just general upkeep items. Those are high-dollar items that, when they go, it's hard to find an extra $20,000 or $50,000 at a time. So we can put some reserve into LTFM, but we've done that, that is included in this budget. The big increase for revenues and expenditures from preliminary budget to the final, you'll see in revenues, it's about $700,000 of revenue increase. Again, it's about $750,000 in ESSER funds, CARES dollars, and the like, but the other $50,000, as I've kind of estimated, is the enrollment, about five students, which would be over $50,000, so it's a $700,000 increase in revenue from prelim to the final. Expenditures, about $750,000, and that is pretty much one-to-one with the expenditures for COVID-related expenditures, whether it be adding six assignments to teachers, adding staff to encourage social distancing, purchase a ten-passenger van this year to help with loss and decrease the number of kids on vehicles, as well as the bipolar organization for the district, which not only helps the students and staff in the building have a very clear air quality, and also kill the virus, is, helps any citizen that comes into our district and the building. So it really is something that really benefits all, so great use of those funds. So in all, you know, the general funds we talk about, slight increases in our undesigned and designated funds, all in all, I think, considering the sort of year we've had, it's benefited to the district, we've done a pretty good job, I think, of trying to manage the expenditures the best we can, with revenues that we have. I'll be forwarding to the other funds, because that's a lot of information with the general. Are there any questions on the general fund? Uh, the next two funds, there's a little bit of transfer from general fund dollars and are ESSER-related, in order to help some losses that we saw due to pandemic-wise. In food service, while food and lunches, breakfasts were free for students through federal grant and ESSER dollars, we still have to pay all of the labor, and it doesn't quite, the revenue received doesn't quite offset all the expense we have in food service. Prelimarily, in that, in a prior revision, we were looking at transfer about $100,000 from general fund to food service to offset that. We've done a little bit better now, as of the last look, and it's about $30,000 short, food service for fiscal year '21 of coverage. These are ESSER funds that we're able to use to offset that, this, when we receive our ESSER funds, we receive in general fund, so that's the transfer in there. And in essence, what ends up happening is we'll have budget-neutral food service. We're not allowed to go into deficit, if we do, we need to plan to get out, and that's why the general fund transfer for that. Community service, that is a fund that is allowed to go into deficit, and according to our auditors, it's pretty common in districts our size, in our sort of areas, especially around our area, that just can't keep up with the cost to offer all the programs we like to offer for our kids, and we're supportive of our community, and want to do those things. It is something we need to try to work to get out of having a deficit balance, because in the end, really, this is offset by a general fund again. And here, there's about $115,000 of transfer from general fund to cover a community, and a lot of that is based on still being responsible and offering essential care worker care at a cost of $0 to people using it, but still having to pay those wages. So there is some loss there for the district, but it's able to be backfilled with ESSER and CARES dollars. Construction fund, we don't have anything going on currently, so there's zero there. Debt service, that'll shift a little bit in revenue, just in terms of where our levy is set, it's set to receive 105% of our need for our, so quote-unquote, mortgage payment for buildings and for referendums. So, um, the state and counties will adjust that as we have maybe an excess in debt, and will reduce or increase that, that need at 105%. Our county does a very good job of collecting taxes, our taxpayers do a good job of paying that, so we usually have a debt excess reduction that goes back to the county. Uh, so that's the reason for the adjustment, or the loss of about $130,000 revenue from projected, because they projected the 105, and we received a little less, as a reduction, excess reduction adjustment. Uh, the payment itself, the only difference there is a little bit in interest. The 2.18 that started is the 2.176 that ends in the debt service payments, and that is just interest. The payments don't change, the interest and principal stay what they are. Trustee agency is our scholarship, and is a pretty big or significant change in terms of the balance of those accounts from preliminary to the end, and a lot of that is to do with an adjustment of how we are timing the scholarship payment. Sometimes we're almost cash flowing a little bit, and so we've required now that scholarship donors pay in advance, and then we submit that to the recipient. So everything now is come in, and then pay out to the scholarship. Some, we've had pretty good success of people wanting to do that, it's kind of feel, it's just easier for not only us to track, but for their organizations to track as well, so. While we had a lot of revenue command, some of those scholarships would pay over four years, it's just now a one-time payment. So rather than trying to track a student through four years of college, if they earn a $500 for four years, they get $2,000 as it goes out to start. So the change is evident now from about $70,000 in expansion revenue in the prelim, to a little over $100,000 in the final budget for '21. As we talked about, overall, the highlight, I guess, would be in the general fund, I'll think, considered. While it's not a huge move in the positive direction, it is a move in the positive direction, and considering the year that we've had, that everybody's had, I think that's a positive. Any questions on any of it? I'll be willing to answer what I can.
The positive thing is the undesigned moving up.
Yes.
Moving up. We've talked a little bit before about, conversation about the undesigned goal that we have, and whether or not that's realistic in today's age.
Yeah, so to kind of put it in, so we're talking fund balance, that 8% to 12% fund balance policy of undesigned funds would be on the expenditures. So 8% to 12% of our current expenditures for fiscal '21 would be a 1.1 to 1.6 million dollar undesigned fund balance. At the end of this fiscal year, estimated about $400,000, so between $700,000 and $1.2 million short of that. The reason we say 8% to 12% is that gives us two to three months of cash or ability to pay bills if we were to be totally cut off of things. At where we're at, 2% to 3% is where we've been, having less than a month worth of expenses to cover is, maybe you'll see that in some districts around here. In terms of audit, they're always going to probably talk to us about it each year, say we should be pushing it towards the other direction, obviously. It's just a narrow enough margin that, you know, swinging the other way is detrimental. From a $400,000 balance, if you, for awful lot, now you're down to $200,000, that really makes it difficult for the district to operate.
Anything else for Josh?
Close.
I would look for a motion to approve the revised budget, when you're ready.
I make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion? Bill on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the revised budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you for your work on that. Consideration to approve a Family Medical Leave Act request?
Uh, the first one listed here is Taryn Benson, starting September 17th and going through January 3rd.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Brenda on the motion? Anna on the second? All in favor of this Medical Leave Act request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve an FMLA request?
The second one is Megan Lampman, from September 7th through November 1st.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Bill on the motion, Rebecca on the second? Other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry, five zero. Consideration to approve the FMLA request?
Uh, the third one is Marissa Flavin, from September 27th through December 3rd.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion?
Second.
Bill on the second? Other discussion? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the property and work comp insurance renewal. That would be one of your last four or five pages.
Yes. Oh, sorry. We've got to keep up with two things here. All right, this is, as it is stated, this is item, is a renewal of our insurance that we get locally through Freeburg Insurance as our agent. And I do recommend approval for that. Maybe Josh can add a little bit more to it.
Just for comparison's sake, the prior year information is on the right, where the quote came in and what the actual is. Last year in total, property, work comp and cyber insurance, about $130,000. Freeburg Insurance is our agent, and they go out and provide quotes for us. We had four property insurance companies, I won't say interested. Two actually gave quotes, one was twice the price, and another one did a quote bid for property. Our property includes property in the marine, general liability, school leaders liability, automobile, umbrella, and a good little surcharge is what the final, to make the number. Hanover, 98681, EMC, 99924, they're both pretty close. I had talked to both, to Jerry Geikin at Freeburg Insurance. If we get à la carte and pick and choose, you can't. What is in one is, you take one or all, all or none. That is an increase from last year's property insurance, just over $10,000, actually almost $11,000. Workers' comp, only had one interested group put a bid for us, Ram Mutual. We've had some claims, and it's affected our rate. And last year, we paid about 37.5. You'll see there, this year is about a $10,000 increase, about 47.5. Cyber insurance, this is new to our district in the last year or so. And as we've seen, it's just more and more prevalent that you need to be covered in issues of cyber, especially with as much, you know, one-to-one as we do. But even last year with all of the distance learning, it's just real important when you have devices in so many hands that are covered in cyber attacks. So there is an increase there, and when I said geez, it went up significant because on a $4,000 quote, when it goes up to $100, that's a lot. Jerry was actually impressed that it wasn't a lot higher. A lot of districts apparently are paying quite a bit more for cyber. So that's not any good news, it's still an increase, but that's what it is. So in total, if we were to go with Hanover for our property, don't have a whole lot of choice with the Ram and the, sorry, the work comp and the cyber, but the total would be about $150,009.09. Significant increase from last year, about $21,500 from last year.
We certainly, we certainly don't have a lot of choices here. We got one bid back. We've always been really happy with the service and what we get out of Freeburg Insurance. So we don't have a lot of choices here.
Well, they priced it against EMC, so.
So we are, we would approve the low bid, would be my thought.
I'm going to approve.
Hannah. Brenda, on the motion to approve Hanover as low bid, Bill on the second. Other discussion?
I don't know if it has to be necessary because there's just one bid, but Hanover on the property, Ram on the work comp, and Marshall Cloud on the cyber.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification, as shown. Okay, Brenda, you still good on your motion?
Yes.
Bill, you are as well?
The total at the bottom.
We approve the total at the bottom.
On the left.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the property work comp insurance renewal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve Ed Foundation, new members.
Here's the list of new Ed Foundation members that the board approves. Is it every other year, or is it every year? If there's a rotation that they overlap?
They're two-year terms, but I think they have new members every year.
I think they overlap, so it must be every year then.
Yeah.
So these are the rotation members coming on to the committee, if approved, for this coming two-year cycle.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
Brenda on the motion, Anna on the second, good race. Any other discussion?
Lots of familiar names on that list and good representatives.
Yeah, thank them for stepping forward.
Always fun to see alumni back in the scheme of things, isn't it? Okay. You have a motion, the second, to approve the new board members? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Fiscal year '22 Achievement and Integration Plan.
This is the agenda item for approval of the Achievement Integration Plan that Stephen presented on earlier.
Still requires approval from MDE, correct? Once we submit it, so we're.
We just need to approve.
Yeah.
Yep.
And again, the financial part of this approval, the increased costs that we might have come from?
Come from the state. There's dollars that we would get from the state for implementation of these programs.
And so earlier, the question was asked of how the connection with Red Wing. I would assume that the other adjoining districts were not interested.
Yeah, I know two of them that were not interested, and I can't answer for all of them.
And I guess as far as the comments from the public, there is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. It's in its second year of activity, so it does exist. And I think from the idea of a group, if you will, that's the racially, what was the term for Red Wing?
Isolated.
Isolated group in Red Wing. And so it was, would make some sense that there's a connection to Cannon Falls and the ability that it's adjoined, so that's part of the reasoning. But it's a good question. So I guess I would be willing to make the motion to accept the plan as written and submitted to the state.
And I'd just like to say, I don't, I don't think the plan is necessarily directed at or intended for American Indian students specifically. Those are just the examples that are used here. But it would be for any, you know, any of the students.
I think there's a lot of opportunities for participation for all students.
Yeah.
There just needs to be some identifiable parts in there.
Right, right. And I think the intention is around diversity and how you deal with that as individuals.
We have a motion on the floor, let's get a second in, and we can continue this conversation.
I'll second.
Okay, let's continue now.
So I guess getting back to the diversity club, you know, the intention is really to get students involved in understanding diversity. And it was noted in the presentation that it's not just diverse students that can belong. And I have employee networks at my employer, and they're of every group, but they're all intermingled, and that's the whole intention, is getting to know your partners, so.
Any other board input?
And the goal, I think, is really to just reduce that achievement gap in those groups to help those students.
Which moves everybody along. I mean, that's, that's the goal.
It's the diversity, equity and inclusion piece.
The free and reduced lunch program was kind of an interesting way to put it, but when I first read it, it didn't click with me, so I think I had to read it a couple of times, but.
Socioeconomic.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so you had to use a standard to get that.
I think it's a really solid plan around what they want to do with tutoring and summer school and providing that transportation. So, I mean, I think I'm supportive of sending it off to the state for approval.
Well, we asked Stephen to go out and ask the question of the students about their connection. He came back with that, and so now we have something to work with.
Right.
That was an important piece of it.
Yep. I would agree.
So we have a motion, the second, on the floor for the approval of the fiscal year '22 Achievement and Integration Plan. We finished discussion, so all those in favor of the approval of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carry. At this time, we regularly go through closing of our board, regular board meeting in order that we have discussion on the superintendent's year-end evaluation. So at this time, we will, I would look for a motion, the second. And upon ending these and reopening, we will then just be attending to the adjournment of the meeting in general. So I would ask that to all public participants here, and even Mr. Menzing. By the way, Mr. Menzing, so good to see you, it represents.
Welcome back.
Getting back. So I would look for a motion to.
And just so that the people on Zoom know, if you wish to come back into the meeting, leave the meeting and then come back into the waiting room, and I will let you back in once we reopen the meeting. And then the people that are here need to probably step in the hallway, and if they want to come back in, you guys can wait out there, that's fine. But we need to shut off the camera, too.
Our sole reason for coming back at the end will be for adjournment. So if you care to wait, if you care to wait in the hall for adjournment just to watch how it goes, you're more than welcome. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to close the session at this point in time.
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Any other discussion? All in favor of closing the session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
Recording in progress.